Or they get, make their final signature, I do think it would be prudent for them to understand directly, this is what it will be and this is what it won't be.
I'd be happy to meet with them one more time because this has to come back to the council, we've got to amend the actual resolution. And that's the act of formal disbandment of the committee. So between now and next month, I can certainly meet with them again and go through some of those issues.
Since this was on the consent calendar, I do need to have a motion to approve and to direct staff to bring back to council the resolution.
Subpo.
Okay? Do I have a second?
I'd like to amend it. I'd like to amend it. That when it comes back to council, that there has been this detailed discussion and there's been a sign off by the Arts Committee prior to final approval.
Well, okay, if the council does that, if they have to agree to it and they don't agree to it, what you're saying is you're contradicting yourself because you're, on the one end, you're voting to bring it back. And then you're ceding your own, this is the council decision, it's not an Arts Commission decision. You cannot cede your jurisdiction to them. You cannot let them decide whether or not to disband or not. All they can do is recommend. And so you cannot put into a direction to staff in any way that if they don't agree, it's off. You cannot do that.
Well, I think there needs to be full disclosure.
Well, full disclosure is a good idea. I think that's fine. You just can't give them the veto power that you would be giving them if you said it. They've got to sign off on it ultimately.
Okay, all right, fine.
So I have a motion and a second on the table of the amendment. It's been squashed. Yeah.
I didn't retract it.
Retracted, yeah. We can't do it. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm saying it passes. So, you've got your direction, city manager. Next consent item is item number 15. I think Councilmember Widmer pulled that.
Yes, I did.
As well as Councilmember Dobbie.
Oh, Dobbie can go first. I'll let you go first.
This is item number 15, approval of contract with the CMS solutions to implement the installation of ShoreTel VoIP telecommunications system. This is the replacement of our failing system. Guys, we're all sick.
I know, I'm trying.
I'm stopping breathing.
Okay, so here are my concerns on this item. So I read the staff report, you know, and I'd read the proposal, the RFP that went out and, you know, with the council's, okay, I ended up with the city managers. I added some things. I don't know how all those were perceived by the suppliers. And actually, quite frankly, my answer and my comments here tonight, it's irrelevant how they responded or not. My comments are as follows. Whatever I've done, some sort of, as a business, a procurement, I want to know what I'm getting. And I want to know if it's a capital thing, not a services contract, but if it's a capital thing, that we understand, you know, who we're doing business with and make sure that they're going to be around for a period of time. And I've taken upon myself to, not to question any decisions that have been made, but to actually do some research on the companies that are involved in this transaction. And I'm a little concerned about those. First off, you know, the leaders in this industry are Cisco and Avaya. Plain and simple. One of the solutions here was Avaya and actually over a five-year period of time, it turned out that looked like, you know, they were right in the mix, if not cheaper than the solution that's being proposed. Putting that aside, I've looked up ShoreTel. ShoreTel is a local company. They've been providing different types of voice-over-IP solutions for a while, but at the same time, their business has been going downhill quite a bit. In fact, currently, their stock is trading for about $3.70. The message boards and the comments, they're burning cash. If you look at the track record, if you read their 10K, you read their 10Q, which I took the time to go over, they may not be around in a couple of years. They may not be around in 18 months. And so, and which then brings me to the next item. So if they're not around, this could become a problem. Now, they have, they're trying to go into a newer technology, which is solution, providing this type of solution in the cloud, which is something that I mentioned, which is really where people are going. So that's, don't buy the hardware. You buy minimal hardware and now suddenly you're using it in the cloud. They have a hardware solution, which is not software-based, and so it's going to be precluded from being upgradable, okay? A hardware solution, you get what you pay for and you live with it for 10 years, which is similar to the solution that we have today. So understanding that my concern about that one situation with ShoreTel, of course, the prime contractor on this is CMS. CMS is a 160-person organization headquartered in the St. Louis area. I called them today because their website told me to call them and talk to one of the friendly people. And they have two to three. The guy said, I have a couple technologists in the area, in the San Francisco Bay area, for the whole area, three maybe, two. Their primary business is refurbishing equipment, not servicing. In fact, ShoreTel, by the way, doesn't have a services business. It's all been outsourced. Now, ShoreTel did not outsource the warranty repair of this equipment to CMS. They're not a supplier of doing warranty services on the equipment that they're having. CMS takes, is a refurbishment organization. And as a refurbishment organization, what they do is they're taking surplus equipment or equipment that has passed warranty and then fixing it up. And so when I read their contract, which I've got some comments on the contract, and I'm more than happy to go over those individually with Bill or here in the meeting, if everybody would like to hear them, but they don't commit that we're going to be getting new equipment. In fact, it implies it's warranted, okay? Yes, they warrant everything for 12 to 18 months. Anybody who refurbishes equipment does that, or you're not in business. So I don't believe we're getting new equipment. We're getting second-generation equipment that's going to be refurbished. I don't think CMS has the skill set that we need. And ShoreTel is not an industry leader. Now, the second solution that you presented here by Vox Network was an Avaya solution. And I'd be a lot more comfortable, I realize that, I don't know, I didn't look at the proposals, I can't comment on them. But key thing here is we're buying this equipment for five, 10, 10 years, okay? Probably only five, because of the way the technology's changing, but at least five. And they, Avaya would take care of their equipment, they would have an upgrade path, they have more of a software capability, and they have, according to this list here, quite a number of suppliers or key people in the area that would be able to support this. And you can always find somebody to help you with Avaya. So my position is this, as a businessman, looking at this, and this is a business transaction, you know, my concern is that we did not do the due diligence on the companies under which we're working with or proposing to work with. I think that they put the city at risk and our investment at risk. And I don't think it's prudent to move forward with this. I encourage anyone to do the research and go to the websites of these companies, and I encourage you all to read the 10Ks. Now CMS is not publicly traded, so there's very limited information in there, but they did claim that they only have 160 people, the majority of the people are working at their facility in St. Louis doing refurbishment of equipment. That's how they make their money, not by supporting technology out in the field and doing services. That's my initial comments.
Councilmember Dobbie, did you have comments?
Could we get a response from staff on this?
Sure, I thought maybe Councilmember Dobbie had something else to amend, but staff respond. You want to just respond all at once?
Pleasure, Councilmember.
Yeah, go ahead.
We had all three vendors come in. We didn't go back and look at the 10Ks and the financials of each of these companies. They all came in and made presentations to staff. They walked through staff, their phone systems, they walked through the software, its operability, its ability for staff to be able to make changes without having to call in a third-party tech to come in and make changes. We did evaluate Mitel, the Mitel solution, KIS, they actually demoed their product using the cloud, and they couldn't get it to operate very well. So that didn't go over very well with respect to that as an option or an alternative. The others, you're correct, they are hardware solutions, but in terms of their operability and their fit from an organization perspective, they provided the best alternative. And CMS with ShoreTel provided that best alternative for the ease of staff to make all of those changes that are going to be needed over time without having to call in outside tech and do that. So that's why we pretty much chose CMS, ShoreTel, over the Avaya solution. They were both very similar, but Avaya was a little bit more technical skills required in order for us to make changes, and there were limitations on the changes we could make to those systems.
Okay.
I have some similar concerns to Councilmember Widmer. You know, we are, the thing about this is, support is going to be very, very important to us. And my first question would be is, when all these people came in, who on our side did we have evaluated?
We had all of the department heads, myself.
I know, but, I mean, with all due respect, are any of you real experts in this kind of stuff?
And then we had a third-party vendor who actually managed a custom Comtract Solutions, was the name of the vendor, who came in and actually worked this process for us.
Do we know who that was?
Yeah, what was his name?
Peter Bollone.
Peter Bollone.
Peter Bollone. He's been used by Redmond City and others.
I don't really know, but are we sure that the consultant we used didn't have any association with any of these companies?
He knew all of them, so yeah, he had associations with them in terms of their product.
You know, does he work with them?
He's worked with them.
Are we sure he was totally unbiased?
Yes.
Because to me, saving a few bucks on this is not smart. That, you know, we need somebody that's going to be there to support us for at least five years or whatever it is. And based on some of the things that Councilmember Widmer is saying, if that's correct, we certainly don't want to have a company that's going out of business supplying the equipment because then we'll be stuck with it. And I don't know if you looked at the 10Ks or any of the other business documents, but from what Councilmember Widmer said, this company might not be around too long. And, you know, I think that's a serious concern.
So I would just ask, with the proposed equipment that is being talked about here, was that to be able to last short-term, near-term, and into the future with the new building plan that would be able to migrate to and integrate into whatever new system that we build into?
Yes.
Okay, it's sophisticated enough, this technology. And so I guess, how assured are you that it is new equipment and new technology and not refurbished equipment? And, I mean, I guess...
Legally, they have to identify if they're providing refurbished equipment. The RFP that went out said, we want a new phone system. We can certainly check with them, double-check with them, but they have to provide new equipment. They don't have a choice. Why would it be shipped from St. Louis when it's manufactured just down south in San Jose? They would have a drop ship here or there. It's one of the things that raised me, well, it was one of the things that alerted me. And that's why I started going through it. And then I thought, well, you know, maybe, because I've read that ShoreTel had fallen on hard times and actually had outsourced their services to third parties, which, you know, some companies do. I mean, you either make equipment or you're in the services business, so it's a difficult transition. And when you cut, you cut. That's an area where people cut. But then when I went to the CMS site, it's all about refurbishment. They had a beautiful video, I watched the whole video, it went on for 10 minutes talking about all their great refurbishment. And yes, indeed, they have some people out in the field. I mean, that's kind of what it said. And so then I went to their contract that they gave us, which I hope we're going to edit because it's 100% one-sided, and as I said, I'm more than happy to go through point by point because I've made all of my lists, all my edits to it. But it is absolutely an unfavorable contract for the town of Atherton, and it does not commit that it's all brand-new equipment. It does not. And in fact, it implies that it's not. And so I am concerned that we may not be getting first, you know, first-run equipment. And I'm concerned that, you know, if you look at the five-year contract, $59,000 versus 52, 52 for the Avaya solution, okay? Avaya is almost the cheapest. You know, Mitel, I mean, I understand that they did a bad job on your solution, maybe they offered something wrong. And I can understand why, you know, but Avaya is probably, if not the leader, you know, Cisco is the leader, but Avaya is the leader of people if you don't want to convert 100% of your infrastructure. So when you have different types of technology or you want to go slower, you go with Avaya. I mean, I'm in the business.
I could certainly understand that, but when they made their presentations and staff looked at, you know, the opportunities to make changes to the system, to change phone lines, names on phone lines, set up voicemail accounts and all that, theirs had the most ease of use. Avaya was far more comfortable.
Bill makes some good points, but here's the problem. We're not in business. We're in government. And the laws that apply to us are totally different. We do not get to choose. We have to choose, the only choice we get to make is quote, "the best proposal." And the best proposal is a competition based on a moment in time. It isn't necessarily fair. And the law is very clear. We're not here to save the taxpayers' money. We're here to ensure there is competition and that the competition is fair and not biased. You hit on some good points. And the reason that this contract is in there is because it came from the vendor, and because of that, all ambiguities, such as is it new equipment or not, are ruled against the drafter. If I change that contract, and by the way, we did change that contract in a lot of significant ways, but they changed it. And so the bottom line is, this is their standard contract they would give to every other city, and other cities have accepted it. And this is one that, because they drafted it, I'm very confident that a call tomorrow from the city manager or the city clerk or whoever's in charge of this project, it's not me, will call them and say, okay, we're assuming, because we said we wanted new equipment, we're getting new equipment. Because remember, that's, one of the problems that we have is, RFP is kind of the framework for this. We can't go back and say, what we really wanted was Avaya, any more than the chief of police can say, what I really wanted was a Chevrolet, not that stupid Ford.
What I'm saying, Bill, you know, I'm not saying, hey, CMS give us Avaya. I'm not saying, I realize that you guys went out, you didn't have any of the OEMs bid it. We had these third parties, Vox Network, CMS, KIS, and Packet Fusion, they're the people that bid other people's solution. Because that's what's here on the proposal analysis, okay? So ShoreTel didn't bid it. CMS did. And what I'm saying is, from my perspective, okay, and we presented, I didn't make this spreadsheet, staff brought this to the council, it's part of the staff report, we looked at the total cost of ownership, okay? And if you look at that chart, the selected supplier is actually not the most expensive, that was Packet Fusion, but is the second most expensive. That's the packet that's in here that I can't, I'm not making this stuff up, it's here. But I do think that part of the evaluation has got to be, you know, we may not be here to make rules, but we are here as stewards of the taxpayer. And when you're buying a capital piece of equipment, this is a commodity asset. This is not QBS. This is a commodity, and it should be bought as such. And you are, that's why we have all the prices here in front of us. And so we're allowed to pick who we think is the best, and part of the thing is the reliability, and will these people be available, and will the OEM be available for us as we go down three and four years from now? That's what our job is. That is what our job is, is to make sure the investments that the city is making are sound and will be here for five to 10 years. And so from my perspective, Bill, I think that the discussion I'm having, you don't want to change the contract, you want to pay for, after something shows that there's so many inconsistencies in their contract, you want to pay for, after something gets here for four days, not four business days. You know, it's from the time that it arrives here, if something shows here on a Friday and it's a three-day weekend, that it's deemed accepted by Monday afternoon if we haven't even installed it and we pay for it. I don't think that that's a prudent thing to do. I would hope that you wouldn't, you wouldn't agree to that. I wouldn't. This is a business transaction. This is a commodity buy, and a prudent businessman or a prudent city manager or a prudent council would say, we want to make sure we're working with prudent people. We're asking for reference checks and we're asking for background on the master plan people. Or when we're looking at contractors to build a library or a new city hall, we're asking to make sure that those guys are going to be around. But they're a one-and-done. This has to stay. And so my two cents is this, and my comment is, my comment is this, all right? I'm saying, I don't agree with the choice because of the selection and the business base of the OEM and the core business and total staff of the prime contractor, and I have concerns over what type of equipment we're really going to get. And will it really be available for us, not just this year, but next year in the future? I've got serious concerns, and I don't support this selection. And I'm more than happy to give you my comments on the contract because the contract is what we will live with. If you don't want to take them, that's your business.
It's our town's business, it's not just his business. And I have to say at this stage, based on all the questions, and I just talked to Bill, our legal representative here, we haven't approved anything yet.
That's true.
So, I mean, we're here to decide whether we're going to go with it or not, so I don't quite know what your comments were.
No, Mr. Widmer's made a couple of comments, such as, I guess he knew Goldman Sachs was going to go south before everybody else in the business did, because nobody, nobody did. And you cannot predict, you cannot contract for someone to guarantee they will be around in two or three years. And interestingly enough, we have...
I didn't say that we should, Bill. I didn't say that we should. I said that you should be going with the business. If you go with the business, it's...
I'm going to call, I'm going to call, or you've had lots to present. I think you've made excellent points. Don't get upset. Don't close up.
Yes, I am closed up. Because you don't want to hear my points.
No, no, I do, but I think that we don't want to get into an argument here. I think that you're very upset and heated about this. I'd like to continue this item to our next meeting and direct staff to do a little bit more research into the vendors, if we can do that, taking into consideration some of the comments that Councilmember Widmer has made. I think that I have ultimate, I have confidence in staff. However, I know that there are horror stories all around jurisdictions where they've bought software programs and software analysis and systems, and it's just gone bad. And I would hate for this to go bad. I think that what staff is trying to do is get a phone system in, because our phone system is dying. That's the objective. And so how can we make that objective become a reality? We have got to operate our town with good equipment. Our police dispatch phone system went down last month, and it was devastating. We cannot have that. So we need to have a new phone system. Councilmember Widmer has made some very passionate and very pointed comments that I think we need to take into consideration. And I don't feel comfortable voting on this as it is right now. I think we need to step back, take a look at it, and in light of some of those comments. Do I have any other council comments?
I just want to make one comment to our legal. You know, you say that you can't guarantee that somebody's going to be in business, but our job is to put a probability of somebody being in business. And for instance, I don't believe you look, Packet's going to go out of business. I don't, I mean, I would say 99% chance. I don't believe Cisco's going to go out of business at 99%. So I can't guarantee that they're going to be in business. But if I was going to have a contract with somebody, I would be pretty sure, in my mind at least, that they were going to be here. And when you look at a company, you have, we have to make that kind of decision. And if a company's burning cash at the rate Bill is saying, and, you know, in this kind of business at the moment, I suspect investment is not good, and they keep burning that cash, they're going to go bankrupt.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Councilmember Weiss, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay. Council Vice Mayor Carlson, is, do I have a motion to continue this? Oh, city manager?
As the council makes that motion, I would like, maybe for some more detail, what exactly would you like staff to come back with at the next meeting? We can bring the financial statements of these companies to you, we can, you know, call references and do that sort of thing, but are you looking for something specific? We have, we've done a public bid, these are the vendors that have bid the project, we're making a selection. Is there something more you would like to see?
Is it possible for Councilmember Widmer to talk to these companies?
He already has, I assume.
Well, I didn't talk to...
You talked to ShoreTel or CMS?
No, I did not talk to ShoreTel. I looked at their information that was available because they're a publicly traded company. And I did put in a call to CMS because they said, call one of our friendly, help us people and find out more about our company. So I did, okay?
Yeah, and that's, you know, you're asking for staff to come back with some information.
But I'm happy to look at your proposals. If you'd like my help, I'm more than happy to help, but if you don't, then that's okay too.
I think that if we were going to do that, we need to form an ad hoc committee, and we're not going to just assign one council member to, you know, micromanage. We're just not going to do that.
Well, I think there's a concern of disqualification as well.
There's a real issue if anybody goes off on their own and contacts any of the bidders. It is, in the industry, it's an absolute bar from participation because you now have some information that the other four don't have.
Publicly, it's public information.
It is public information that's not...
And anybody can go look it up.
Bill, let me try and tell you the law for a change. It is, in fact, information that the other four don't have, nor does the public have. That's the problem. You're not allowed to do this on your own. We had this discussion a year ago, I believe. And the problem is this, if you have an issue or a question, I, you've raised some excellent points. The problem is, you're not the fact-finder, you're not the person that's supposed to be doing this investigation. It's the city manager and the staff, and you put us in the middle. You put me in the position of saying, you may be disqualified because you went out and, you tampered with the jury. If this were a jury, you went out and found your own information. Now, the good news is, you found it at a stage when I'm not sure it really matters, quite frankly, because the questions that you have need to be answered by staff, the people that are running the town. And then they need to come back to the policymakers, because Jim, you make, you're absolutely correct. You guys haven't done anything yet, and you can say no to the recommendation of staff. But you can't say no because one of these other ones is better. I know because I'm in the industry. To say that, you have biased your own position, and you don't get to play in this game anymore. And we're a problem.
I didn't say no because the sky is...
I didn't say, I didn't say no because this guy is better. I said, no because these companies in my mind are unstable. And I use publicly information, public information that's out there. SEC reports, anybody can download those. Should somebody have done that here? Perhaps, maybe so. But anyone can do that. And you can't tell me, Bill, that I can't sit up here and I can't do research. I can do research. I'm not calling and asking, please tell me about your bid. I didn't talk to anybody. I didn't say, hey, look, I'm here on the council, please give me this or give me that. It's my job to come to the meetings prepared, okay? And you can't give me a lobotomy telling me that I have to come here and just take what staff puts in front of me and just vote blindly. Because we would just say, why even bother show up?
No, Bill, did you?
Can I make a suggestion? That with all the research and all the concerns that you have raised, if you had gone to city manager prior to the meeting, so that city manager and staff would have had the opportunity to hear you out without making an embarrassing situation or grandstanding like this, it would have been a lot nicer and better for a collaborative meeting. So that way, they would have been able to go back and do some homework and say, you know, let's think about this in this way, instead of attacking.
Unfortunately, we only have so much time to look at stuff. And I did the research last night.
So I'm going to ask-
So I'm sorry no one else was available.
Vice Mayor Council, Vice Mayor Carlson.
I was going to say something along the same lines. And this discussion should have taken place prior to the meeting with staff.
Yes, okay, how about you?
I don't think that, I'm prepared to give any suggestions as to what more we need. I think that there still needs to be maybe further dialogue, hopefully dialogue, between Bill and the staff on the thing. And if there's, we're not going to take any action tonight. Come back and if the staff feels that what they proposed is what we should do after hearing Bill out, I'd be a devoted favorite.
Can I just make one last comment? Would we, is it possible for Bill to talk to the consultant we used?
No.
I think he did at the very beginning in formation of the RFP. He talked to Peter on the phone.
I talked to him during the RFP.
I'm going to close the, we're going to continue this with direction for staff to just do a little bit more due diligence about the selection process, about the company and some of the companies.
Perhaps, to the vice mayor suggested, maybe that Bill and I sit down and talk to some of the data and the details that he might be interested in. And bring some of that back at the next council meeting for the full council to evaluate.
I would be able to-
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
For the record, I'm always happy to view anybody suggesting revisions to contracts.
Okay.
And, but again, if I sign off on it as approved to form, that means I really believe it's the correct form. And if not, I need three votes of the council to change that contract.
Understood. Okay, so we're continuing with item 15. I pulled item 18 for discussion. It is the resolution approving the Environmental Programs Committee funding request for the Earth Day event. And the reason I pulled it was because I'm happy to see the Environmental Programs Committee up and running again. And I'm happy, I believe, I'd like to, in spirit of, you know, collegiality and support, support the $1,000 to acknowledge the Earth Day. I know that the committee had a pretty short time to come up with some kind of an event. And because Earth Day's right around the corner. But I just am, I would like to hope that they will broaden their horizons a little bit and not just think about planting a tree. I know that we do have a tree committee. We planted, I think, five trees last month for Arbor Day. And to plant another tree and give champagne or stuff like that, it's, with the $1,000, I think, is not really in the spirit of environmental programs. There are a couple of other bigger, broader, I think, important environmental projects that I would like to have council discuss. And I don't know if this is a good time to bring those up, or if we need to put it on the May agenda to call for discussion of these projects and get council action to direct the Environment Programs Committee to take these on. Is that what we should do?
You're talking about the grand jury report.
The grand jury report.
That will come to the council in April.
Okay.
And the council can provide some direction as to whether they'd like the EPC to tackle that issue.
Okay. And then Assemblyman Rich Gordon has introduced an Assembly Bill 416, creating a local emissions reduction program and providing local assistance grants to eligible recipients. And I think that that would be something to get their teeth into because it's a gas emissions project, something like that. And then we do have the high-energy homes audits that are still out there that to reduce the carbon footprint. Those are some of my suggestions. Does any other council member have a comment about this?
Yeah, I frankly think that tree planting on Earth Day activity seems to be missing. To me, Mrs. Mark, I think that the purpose of Earth Day is to create a greater awareness of environmental issues concerning Mother Earth. Finding a tree in our park is, I think, too inward-thinking when people should be encouraged to look, be concerned about the big picture. And as mentioned, we do have a tree committee. It's almost like someone on the environmental committee wanted to do one-of-smanship on the tree committee here. But, you know, in the words of one of the council members, it is a worthy project, planting a tree. I do object, though, spending any time-